Good evening.
Form available at the front entrance and presented to the city clerk.
At this time, if you would please silence yourself and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded.
And each person is allowed three minutes speaking time.
If you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak.
This time I'll call the regular city council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace, February 25th, 2020. Right down here. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Patrick Bauer of the Brooke Church.
Tonight, a call to order the city council.
And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Lieutenant Doug Wolfe of the San Bernardino County Sheriff.
Regular meeting, March 10th.
Please stand for invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Tonight, we'll be closing in memory of William J. McKeever, or Bill McKeever.
Good evening, I thank you for.
He was a fifty-plus-year resident of Grand Terrace, his wife, who survives him as an active member of the Women's Club. Bill McKeever opened his civil engineering company in 1976 in this local area, was responsible for a lot of the early development of Grand Terrace. He was a member of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Rangers Mounted Posse from the late seventies to the 1990s. He was the captain in 1984. He was the president of the Riverside Highland Water Company from 1985 until his passing. And he was an active member of Christ the Redeemer Church. So we will be closing in his memory. At this time, we'll have an invocation by Pastor Hosue Zapata of Centerpoint Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Jeff Allen. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we thank you, first and foremost, for your goodness, Lord, and your grace. We thank you for all the wonderful blessings, God, that you pour out on us, fresh and anew each and every morning. And so, Lord, I ask now that you would be with this meeting this evening. Be with each member of this council, Lord. Give them peace of mind, clarity of mind, patience, Lord, and discernment, that they might lead this city in a manner that glorifies you and you alone. Lord, I pray for all the members of the city as well. Any concerns raised or discussed this evening, God, would be brought respectfully and be heard and tended to. Lord, I pray for your guidance this evening and for your presence. We love you, Lord. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So we don't have any special presentations tonight. Is there any reordering, additions, or removal of items from the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
There is not, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by city council at any one time. At any time without discussion, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Next is our public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not on the regular agenda. Do we have any requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. So I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications, beginning with Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. On February 26th, I attended the League of California Cities Quarterly Division Meeting in Ontario, and the subject matter that evening was disaster preparedness and the importance of the Chief Resilience Officer. We discussed and learned what the Chief Resilience Officer's duties encompass and why we should care about that, why it's important. In a city of our size, of course, our city manager holds that role, but some of the larger cities, like, for example, Ranch Kukumunga and Riverside, they have their own. And so, the Chief Resilience Officer of the UCR system was there to address us. And the key takeaway for me there was the importance was they work across all departments to, including the community, the chamber, to ensure that the continuity of functions and that businesses can reopen, you know, and make money. Because that's, after all, that's the objective, is to, you know, try to recover as soon as possible, and so that... And that is another great reason for the importance of a strong chamber of commerce. And I would really like to see that in our city. So the next thing, also, the next day, or the next evening, was that great State of the City address we had. And I'm not going to go into all the details of it because there's a... We were all there, but I do want to thank Blake Parsons, the owner of Vista Blue Mountain, and Megan Miller Trabuco, the executive director, for hosting us and the great hospitality. That's a wonderful venue, and I really look forward to the next event we can have there. A couple of things that I want to ask about is, I'm not real pleased with the situation with our dog park. I understand that it's closed again for reseating, and I tell you, I swear, I have tried for five, six years to get rid of the grass in my yard to no avail. It keeps coming back. And here we have a park that we have invested more into it than eighty percent of the houses, the residences in Grand Terrace, and we can't keep grass in it. And I don't understand that conundrum there, you know, is that I can't get rid of grass, and we can't keep grass in the dog park. I'm trying to figure out, you know, it just seems like we've spent an awful lot of money on that dog park to keep it closed, to get more grass in it. But that was just an observation of mine, and on that... And I've also, one quick other point, some residents have contacted me about some asphalt that was dumped down in the flood zone and spread around, and I just want them to know that we're aware of that, and that I just want them to know that if there's any activity that is in violation of zoning going on in any area of the city, or that where a property owner doesn't have the proper permits to do what they're doing, then I think we need to make sure that the residents who have concerns are being addressed with that. Any property... Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Allen, I can answer your question about the grass. I have three dogs, and I can't keep grass in my backyard either. They're terrible in the yard. Anyway, I attended the League of Cities, too. I'm on the board, the directors on there, and like Mr. Allen said about resilience, and they're talking about, you know, have everything prepared, you know, the local government's going to come and help you and first responders, but you also have to help yourself, and, you know, have plenty of water and food available and your emergency supplies, because it might be a while. We went over the bylaws, we're redoing our bylaws on the board, and our next meeting's going to be scheduled for April 30th in Ranch Kukumunga. If you'd like to attend, I'll put it on there, you know, where it's going to be at, what's located. And then, what we're doing on the boards, if we buy one, we get one free, so I have to go, and if anybody else wants to go, you know, we don't have to pay for two people for dinner. So it'll just be one, and the meetings are really good. And then, I attended Read Across America, March 2nd, at GT Elementary in Terrace View. Had a really great time. I made sure I got rid of that one book, Fox with Socks, because it was a tongue twister, but the kids were all great, it was fun, you know, I enjoyed that. It's really a special time with them, and it was nice, they were actually, you know, reading, and they asked all kinds of questions, but it was a really good time, and I was blessed to be able to do that. And then, of course, the Blue Mountain hike, it was a beautiful day that day, and a lot of people were asking if, I don't know, if we used to have it twice a year, if we could think about bringing that back until we get the trailhead fixed, but a lot of out-of-towners loved the view, they loved our little city. I'm hoping people went by and went to go get lunch afterwards and, you know, take advantage of our city's amenities, but a lot of great families up there, you know, thank you, city staff and volunteers for, you know, making a really special day again. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Robles?
Yes, I also attended the League of Cities Division Meeting, because they want those of us that serve on policy committees now to be available to report on any actions. I also attended the State of the City, and I had, in an email, congratulated staff on putting forward an excellent State of the City. I think it was the best one as far as amenities and layout that we've ever had, and thanked the mayor for an outstanding presentation. Also, I want to take the time during my council comments to say, you know, we had... That reminds, we had a very busy week. And then it was time again for those of us that do things on weekends, you know, for the last quarter, I found it difficult to do my job of getting agenda items so late. I had to work on the agenda while my husband drove from Phoenix, and fortunately, I have an iPad and a cellphone. Otherwise, you know, it's very difficult to do my duty as a city councilperson, and I still don't feel that I had enough time to really read the documents, digest them, go over them in my head about what the intent, or if we're really covering some of these items as well as we should. And I just want to, you know, say to staff that, you know, really had the promise Wednesday, and I think Thursday noon should be the absolute drop-dead time. I looked at the bottom of the agenda items, and some of these things are still going through the review process internally on the dates we're supposed to have them. So please listen to my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank the staff for the excellent job that they're doing day-to-day. They've got an awful lot of work to just push through the sieve, and they do their very best, and I believe it's really accomplished. I really enjoyed the mayor's State of the State. It was a professional operation, the staff did a terrific job and support. Woody's came out, did some food for it, and then, of course, we had the drinks, which I was really surprised about, although I don't imbibe, but still, I was impressed. In the long run, I thought it was a first-class thing. It's really nice to drive down our, you know, main drag there in Barton Road in the evenings and see lights on the left, and lights on the right, and lights on the left, and lights on the right. By George, we're a city. It's really neat. I think the hard work that the staff has put into helping us accomplish this is rarely thanked, and I, for one, I think, congratulations. You've done a terrific job. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, so I'm going to go back to February 22nd. We welcomed into this city a local author, which was really a nice thing for our friends of the library to do. Larry Burns talked about the Secret Inland Empire Guide to Weird, Wonderful, and Obscure. And so, he shared a lot of the things that he's discovered throughout the region, and so, of course, we told him the things that, in Grand Terrace, that he needs to put in his next book. We'll see if that happens. On February 26th, I was part of a groundbreaking ceremony for the 210 widening project. This is where the freeway bottlenecks between the City of Highland and the 10 freeway, and so the additional lanes will alleviate traffic congestion for all of us who travel the 210. On February 27th, I was at the State of the City address. And the Vista Blue Mountain, thank you so much to them, they created a wonderful environment for us there. We were able to offer a great overview of the projects that have been long in coming that are starting to happen, and those that we can see just on the horizon. Appreciate all the hard work that staff put into that evening, and I don't think you could have planned for better weather. So, excellent job there. March 2nd, Read Across America, I was able to read to an assembly that was put together by Mrs. Marcano at the... Excuse me, Mrs. Marcano at the Terrace View Elementary, and unfortunately, that was all I had time for. I wasn't able to get to some of the other schools, but I really enjoy the opportunity to do that. On March 4th, I attended the SBCTA Board Meeting. So there were a number of things. We have a lot of end-of-year planning for the coming year, so there were a lot of those reports that we received. But we also authorized staff to complete an appraisal of properties that were identified and make offers of just compensation for property owners for the acquisition of property necessary on Interstate 215, University Avenue interchange. If anybody uses that interchange, know that there is quite a bit of construction coming. They will be creating a brand-new interchange that's supposed to really move traffic along better, and it's called a diverging diamond, so I'm interested to see what that actually looks like when it gets done. We approved funding, additional funding to a contract with the California Department of Transportation for design and right-of-way phases of Interstate 215 Barton Road interchange project. Yes, our interchange project, they are still adding money to that. They needed funding for parcel acquisitions, utility, relocations, right-of-way legal support, and so, the amount that we approved was an additional $2,44,250. This was of Measure I Valley Freeway funds and right-of-way capital and support for a new total design and right-of-way cost of $43,298,337. We allocated $3 million in Valley State Transit Assistance Funds to activities related to development of Ontario International Airport Rail Access Alternatives Analysis. They're looking for more alternatives for the public in Riverside and San Bernardino County to be able to get to the airport, and so they will be doing an alternatives analysis as to which rail solution is the best and that they want to move forward with. We also looked at a bill by Assemblymember Chris Holden and a Senate bill by Senator Anthony Portantino. Both of these state legislators are looking at creating a separate construction authority that would have the powers to bring funding into a rail solution to the Ontario Airport. Senator Portantino's bill actually is looking at our Measure I funds and saying that this new... His new authority should be able to take those funds from San Bernardino County taxpayers and use it for this new authority. It was unprecedented. Both Assemblymember Chris Holden and Senator Portantino came to the board meeting to discuss their bills and to hear our concerns with respect to their designs on our taxpayer money within the county of San Bernardino, the self-help funds that we are taxing ourselves for. So we also conducted a public hearing to consider the proposed fee schedule for use of electric vehicle charging stations located at SBCTA parking lot and the San Bernardino MetroLink station at the Santa Fe Depot and the San Bernardino Transit Center. We also, as I said, we had various quarterly and end-of-year reports. Omni-Trans was the same day, and the few things that we did, other than receive various quarterly and end-of-year reports for the coming fiscal year, we authorized award of a contract to provide services for transportation. These are complimentary, what they call paratransit services, and they are required by Americans with Disabilities Act. This is OmniGo and Neighborhood Circulator Service. So the access and OmniGo and microtransit contract was awarded to a company called First Transit. We authorized a contract to Alliant Insurance Services for the provision of insurance broker services. We authorized a contract to Toller Manufacturing Company for the provision of bus benches, shelters, and amenities throughout the county. And finally, on Saturday, I really enjoyed the Blue Mountain hike. Thank you to staff and volunteers who made it such a wonderful day. Our county supervisor and her partner came out to hike with us, and they realize what a gem Grand Terrace is. So hopefully, we get a little bit more visibility from the supervisor. And that will conclude my reports. We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business, so we will move to new business. Item number six, acceptance of work from TSR Construction and issue a notice of completion for signal modification at Preston Street and Barton Road. Public Works Director, Alan French.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers. Item is for the notice of completion for the Preston Signal Modification Project. Staff report supports goal number two, to maintain public safety by investing in critical infrastructure. The project was to update the Preston Signal with a five-head left-turn indicator. The existing signal was the only one in the city that did not have a left-turn indicator on the main thoroughfare. This project also replaced the traffic signal controller box that was damaged in an accident. The project was awarded in October of 2019 for $82,000. A change order was processed in February for an additional $35,000 due to wiring issues and the corroded conduits that were in place at the signal. The work was completed earlier this month, and the inspector has signed off on the work. Funding for the signal project, five percent came from Spring Mountain Ranch Fund. A reimbursement from the traffic signal collision was another aspect of the funding, and a diff amount for the funding for the change order. At this time, staff is recommending that council approve and accept the work by TSR and direct staff to file a notice of completion. Should you have any questions, I'm here, our inspector. Mr. Ed Nylund is here. And I don't see the contractor here. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. French. Other questions of staff at this time? All right, there are no questions at this time. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. I will say, Mr. French, that I have been through that intersection a number of times, and it seems to be much improved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so any other discussion or perhaps a motion on this item? Councilmember Allen?
Madam Mayor, I will move the agenda item, approve and accept the work, and direct staff to file a notice of completion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen and Hussey and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Next is item number seven, Professional Services Agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Benson Productions for Videographer Services. That Assistant City Manager, Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Before you is the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Benson Productions for Videographer Services. Their staff report supports our core values of positive productive work environment and exceptional customer service by providing clear airings and recordings of the city's public meetings. So for those who were here prior to the council chamber upgrades, council meetings started being videotaped in 2002. Soon after that, the city established a public education and government access channel, a PEG channel, to air the taped council meetings. We also implemented an online agenda processing system, allowing live streaming of the council meetings on the city's website. In addition to that, upgrades to the council chambers occurred to provide clear airings and recordings of the public meetings. Of course, we did also go through some growing pains in adapting to the new audio and video equipment we had. Eventually, we added the Planning Commission meetings, and we started videotaping sponsored events and activities, and it was taped for the benefit of the community, and we would upload them to the city's website and other social media. As a result of all of these, more complex videotaping and editing services were necessary. So we solicited informal bids for videographer services, and we actually received from five different production companies. And what we tried to do is make sure they were local, so that if we needed them at any time, they were not too far. So we kept it within the vicinity. And at this time, based on the bid amounts that we had received, Benson Productions was the lowest responsible bidder. So at this time, we recommend to award a professional services agreement to Benson Productions for Videographer Services in an amount not to exceed $80,000. So this is a five-year contract, and we are estimating an annual amount of $16,000 per year, and we would request or authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, subject to city attorney approval as to form. At this time, the representative of Benson Productions is in the chambers if city council would like to talk to him.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Fortune. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion or consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Professional Service Agreement with Benson Products and Videography Services for the term of five years at a maximum cost of $80,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, subject to city attorney approval.
Mayor, this is Doug Wilson, second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hussey, second by Mayor Protem Doug Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Item number eight, approval of settlement agreement and release of all claims between the city, CSG EV LLC and Margaret Miller, and approval of an amendment to access easement involving City Hall and 22797 Barton Road. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. So what the council has before them tonight is information regarding the settlement agreement and release of all claims between the city, as mayor earlier, CSG EV LLC and Margaret Miller, and the approval of amendment to the access easement involving the City Hall at 22797 Barton Road. So the background on this is the city approved a lease agreement on May 14, 2019, to install a DC fast electric charging station here at City Hall. And what those are, those charging stations there, those stations will charge a vehicle within eighty percent charge in thirty minutes. The normal standard for a Level Two charger is about two and a half hours, and for a normal plug at your house, it's about 24 hours to get the same sort of charge. So did the contractor do installation of DC fast electric chargers? The contractor was issued a permit by the Building Department, B00003310, to install the conduit, and that would be the conduit which Edison would then pull the wire through the system. The contractor modified the plans and installation of the conduit. The contractor's change resulted in placement of the conduit on private property, which is Ms. Miller's property. Miller and the city have an existing ingress and egress that is ten feet at each side of the access road. That's on the side of City Hall here. That access road is ten feet on each side, meets in the middle. Once staff learned of the conduit being placed on Miller property, staff contacted Miller for an easement to allow Edison to pull power through the conduit within the easement for the transfer. Miller wanted to... Wanted the following items addressed before granting an easement to Edison. Miller states that contractor blocked customers' access and damaged property during construction. She wanted clarification of the existing easement. She also wanted maintenance of existing easement to fall within the city, to maintain the easement at the same level as it maintains its parking lot. And then she wanted signage and safety measures for access to the road. Apparently, over the years, vehicles, and some of them city vehicles, have been parking on the side of the access road, therefore blocking traffic through that area and causing some concern for Miller and some of her customers. So she thought this might be a So she thought this might be a good time to address those particular issues in this process. Here's some pictures of what we're talking about. So this is, this area is right in front of city hall. It's where our power transformers are. And so what Edison, what our consultant did was was drill through here to go up the side of the way, up through here. This is where I just showed you here, and they're coming down here to tie into a transformer to power the DC fast chargers that are located here. So the permit required the consultant to run this on our side of the 10-foot easement, and then Miller has 10 on this side. So they were issued a permit to do this particular sample here. And what happened was there was a modification by the contractor along with Edison that resulted in the conduit being placed on this side on Miller's property. And then Miller's property ends here. And so normally what happens when there's a modification to the plan, the city would then come back and approve that modification. At that point in time, the city would have noticed that moving this to this side versus the original location would have caused an issue that we would require an easement from Miller. But that conversation never happened and the contractor moved forward with putting this in this way. And so this is in the back of the parking lot where the transformer is going to go to power the DC fast chargers. So staff believes the contractor is at fault for relocating the conduit without modifying the existing plan. Staff believes Miller's requests are reasonable. Staff recommends city assume maintenance of existing easement. Staff has implemented safety measures on the access road as in we've called out the fire department. We painted the curb red. We did get an assessment from the fire department that it would be a good idea not to have vehicles parked there. And the contractor has agreed to pay the full $5,000 for the easement processing and damages during construction. When we really put together the report, the contractor indicated that they were only able to support $2,500. We let them know that we're moving forward with that, but we were also going to go after their subcontractor for the remaining amount. Since that point in time, I was contacted on Monday that they will, the contractor, will assume the full liability and responsibility for payment for any agreement that we enter into. For this, Miller has agreed to executive easement, to execute an easement which will allow Edison to power the EV charging station on March 24, 2020. And then she will also execute the settlement agreement. Now, staff also, we just had a project that staff talked about on the public works side, and one of the things that was mentioned that there was a contract manager on that project. There was not a contract manager on this particular project, so construction manager was not used on this project and therefore this contributed to part of our issue of not being able to follow through with making sure that the plans were implemented according to plans. And so our commitment is to bettering oversight of contracts in construction projects. And I'm available for any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Councilmember Robles.
I have a few. I'm satisfied with the agreement. I'm just found it a little bit odd because I'm accustomed to when there's disagreements, you know, having to do with land or property disputes, that they tend to come into closed session. And in the staff report, and I understand the mayor's concern about meeting, you know, especially if there's potential litigation with someone, but it turned into, that March 3 meeting turned into a settlement negotiation contract, excuse me, meeting. So, but, so I think that's not a good practice and I think we need to be aware that, you know, when a meeting goes from informational to negotiating, the city manager should advise the member about that and that, you know, you should negotiate that without members because we don't have an ad hoc committee. We haven't delegated anybody to be at the negotiating table. But what I was wondering, because I met with Margie Miller and when I first looked at this for the small amount, my question, wasn't this something within your spending authority to settle?
The dollar amount would have been, but what we were doing was she wanted a modification to the existing easement, and so that needed to come back. And we didn't, we were going to hold the contractor responsible for this entire amount. So I didn't want to step out there and authorize $5,000 and go after that. We have always contended that this was the responsibility of the contractor. And so I wanted to make sure that, and I did, you're right, I did look and see if within my ability under $10,000 to settle the issue, but because the easement came into play, that was more of a document I needed to bring back to the council.
And my final question was, was the city attorney present during the settlement negotiation meeting?
I don't believe that there was a settlement negotiation.
It says that.
And let me just...
I mean, don't change the, it's a settlement and release agreement.
Okay, so when I met with Margie Miller, I had no idea what Margie Miller wanted. Margie came in, because Margie wanted to meet with the mayor and the mayor said, "I will not meet with, I will not meet with you on a city-related issue." And she asked if I could be there, and so I was there and Margie presented her issues and concerns. She talked about and was very passionate about the safety on the ingress and egress. She also expressed her concern about the wear and tear on her side because of our parking. And she presented us with information that she said this is what she would need in order to settle the easement. There was no back and forth. I got her letter. I said, "Thank you very much." And she expressed her concerns, and that was it.
Your staff report says, public works director was there, management analyst was there, you were there, and I don't know who else. With this thing, I can't access the backup material. Correct. So it seemed to me, you know, whenever you have formal, informal dialogue, but you know, this item that we're to approve is a settlement agreement and she's releasing us from any future liability on this particular subject. So you can call it whatever you want, but the end result is it's a settlement agreement. And I would wonder why we don't have our city attorney present. So I feel more comfortable about what's being presented to me. And I wonder, what is our policy about having the city attorney always in a meeting that has anything to do with any land negotiation?
Well, and so...
Mr. Duffy, I'm going to weigh in on this. Because Mrs. Miller specifically asked to have our public works director there to hear her concerns about public works. She handed a document to me and Mr. Duffy and what I told her was, we needed to have our city attorney review it and we needed to have it go to council for their discussion. There was no back and forth. There was no negotiation. We listened to her concerns and we ended the meeting in that way. Now, the staff report says this is coming forward because the settlement agreement was based on a letter that she handed to us that went to our city attorney, and he reviewed it and he took it over from there. And I was not part of any further discussions with respect to this item.
Okay, and I'm not saying that you were, but I'm saying there's best practices and the best practices that, you know, you were there. So just, you know, there's a lot of literature out there that if we attend a meeting because of our position, power, and influence, that staff automatically defers to us. We don't have to speak. Just our presence there does it. So I have no issues with settling this, but what I want to do is that next time we have any issue that is a dispute, I think we have the ability to go in closed session and we should go into closed session because there are other issues brought up that I'm not going to bring up in a public forum.
Brought up where?
And I'm...
In your meeting?
I have the floor right now.
I'm asking a question for clarification.
I have the floor right now. I'm talking.
Yes, and you're supposed to be asking questions.
You're bullying me and you continue to bully me. When you find something that's disagreeable to you, please let me speak.
Please ask questions at this time. That is what this time is. No, you are stating what you want to see in policy. That is not asking questions.
Well, ma'am, you sat in a meeting to do a settlement negotiation which you had no authority from this council to sit there and do.
I did not sit in any meeting to negotiate a settlement. I'm going to go to the next question since you're done with your questions and you're making statements.
And I will say that you're bullying and you're abusing your position and you have accused me of violating council procedures, which you in fact did.
Mayor, point of order. I believe the mayor has the floor in all conditions and time is granted by the mayor. So if we can keep that in mind, I have some questions. My understanding is that this agreement has not been approved at all, that it has been submitted to us for review and for discussion. I have some questions in relation to what damage was done via this miscellaneous damage that was done that the claimant has said that the contractor did and there's some kind of a ghost number associated with it. Do we have some sort of a pickup list or anything that says what damage was done?
We do not. We did request that. She referenced that sprinklers and the sprinkler system was damaged, but she also referenced the cost that she incurred for the easement review and for legal fees.
I understand that part, which of course is separate from physical damage. The physical damage, did she give us any photographs or contractors' bid or any ticket, you know, work tickets or anything else that might substantiate the amounts that she spent out of her pocket to recompense the damage?
She did not, and we did ask for that.
So as far as I'm concerned, that does not count in this negotiation. But that's up to the five-panel circumstance here. It's just my opinion that anything that was represented as a damage by the contractor is not legitimate. The reason for the modification, why did they move it over? Why did the contractor move it over?
So the contractor received the plans, approved the plans and received the permit. Then the contractor forwarded those plans to Edison. Edison made a recommendation and instead of, instead of the contractor coming back to the city for approval, they, contractors, subcontractors started the work.
What is the size of the easement that Edison said they had to have in order to be able to maintain the line in its new location?
Mr. French can answer that.
Yes, Alan French, Public Works. The width of the easement for Edison is six feet.
So what is that total width? In other words, from the center line of the, of the line that, where it is located now, how much on both sides?
It would be three feet on each side of that line.
Three feet on each side, so six feet. So what they're saying in essence, and I'm going to assume this although I don't know because I don't have an easement, but I'm assuming that because originally it was shown up against the curb and erroneously, that Edison would not accept that kind of a maintenance easement. They had to have some space on both sides to get their equipment in and out if they ever had to dig it up. Although it is in conduits, the chances are very slim.
It is, but the real culprit was the curve on the conduit coming out of the transformer.
Oh, the sweep.
They required a bigger sweep.
They needed a bigger sweep, okay. And is this five-inch conduit, just out of curiosity?
Yes, councilman.
Yeah, that's the reason for the bigger sweep. Miller, and here's the thing, the disconnect that I have in this situation. Miller is getting out of maintenance of quote-unquote their very important road that they needed to be able to preserve in perpetuity for, in exchange for signing a, for signing a document? I don't see how that happens. Those are two completely unrelated items. That to me is a shakedown. That's not, that's not correct and I don't think we should agree to that. That's, they agreed, or whoever signed this from Zempezi and Benedict to begin with, agreed to maintain their piece, their slice. And if we go in and have to do that in perpetuity, it doesn't have anything to do with this little easement that's happened. So it would seem to me that that wouldn't be correct. And the item that is kind of parallel to that is, my understanding that this road, and I guess the big concern was, you know, let's make sure that people don't block the roadway. Okay, I'll get it. This thing was created back in 1983 when I was just a young lad. Thirty years old. At this, at this time, there is a left and a right. And the reason why there's a left and a right is because there's an in and an out. Now, I think it's correct when they say, "We need signs on there that tell people not to be stupid." In other words, don't park on either side of that because you have a road there. And just because it's an easement doesn't mean it's not a road, right? It's basically a public instrument. So since it's a public instrument, then it's used for a right and a left or an egress and ingress. If it's that important that it has to be an egress and ingress, then how do they justify getting out of the maintenance of it? Aren't they, isn't that supposed to be equal sides on their, on their deal? That's the reason why they wanted it to begin with, was to be able to make sure that they preserve that easement, and it's a road.
So Mayor Protem Wilson, I would agree with you. I would say except for the fact that while the easement is supposed to benefit both the city and the property owner, that road is used, as you said, as a road for everyone that passes through there. And so while Mrs. Miller's property line ends at a certain point, let me see if I can grab that. There. But the road is often used from, from everyone from this parking lot to go back and forth and cut through and so on.
So am I assuming that the road actually goes in a U shape all the way around? Or does it just stop right down here at the end of the parking lot?
Mrs. Miller's easement ends right here.
Okay, and where does, where does our part of the easement end? Is it the same description?
Ours goes all the way over and we take over the other side of this. This is all our...
All the way up and around?
Yeah, and so here's what will happen. Fast forward 10 years from now, and the city decides to slurry-seal their parking lot. Are we really going to slurry-seal only our side of the parking lot and then have to be faced with public outcry about this other half of this road not being completed?
No, I think it was always intended to be a Siamese operation. In other words, mutual easement for mutual benefit. And even though it doesn't say that wording in there, I believe the spirit is correct. And so if that's the case, then why are they getting out of their side of the, of the maintenance? I think the intention was is that we would all get together and make sure that it gets done at the same time like we have other areas like that, where we have a city and a county boundary. You know, it makes sense, it makes common sense, and it makes good sense for them because usually you don't have to pay the up and down price of a Barbara Green or something else that has to happen. Granted, that road is corroded. It's been there for the 40-some-odd years I've been here and that I know of, it's never been repaved. So, but I just don't think, I think we're talking apples and oranges and it may be, it may be kind of snarky to do, but I think this whole arrangement's a little snarky. So if we're going to do that, then let's stick to the agreements. Just my thought.
Yeah.
Councilmember Allen.
It's okay if you want... Did you want to finish saying something, Mr. Duffy?
No, I can say it later. That's fine.
Okay, I'm sure you'll have that opportunity. So I'm glad you left this picture up here because I was wanting to ask you something, Mr. Duffy. Is where exactly, does my little thing work here? Oh, my battery's dead on my pointer. Hey, did that, did the conduit go under the asphalt or did it go under the dirt shoulder beside that alleyway, this alleyway right here? Did, was the, was the shoulder trenched or did they dig up the asphalt?
Councilman, they tunneled under the asphalt, so the conduit is under the asphalt.
When it went across the road from our trans, from our, or all the way back?
So the construction work was done right here, sir? And then they tunneled all the way through.
Oh, I see, okay. So none of the actual road was damaged or anything like that?
That is correct.
And none of the shoulder?
That is correct. And so, so let me emphasize... And so, so let me emphasize.
Yeah.
That, that is a $30,000 conduit.
Yeah.
That we do not have access to because of this particular issue. If I weigh all the factors, it would be in the city's best interest to be able to access that conduit. And that is why I brought, I, I brought this recommendation before the council.
So my, my concern is similar to what the Mayor Pro Tem has, Mayor Pro Tem has is that it's, and what Councilmember Robles mentioned earlier about she felt like this was some sort of a release and I don't see this as that. I see this as a encumbering us in perpetuity forever for the maintenance and upkeep of someone else's easement. And that's how I understand it anyway. And, and I have some concerns about that.
Okay. Do you have further questions at this time?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Duffy, when we put the conduit in there, I think Mr. French says five inches in diameter?
Yes.
My concern is, you know, it went under the asphalt, but what's the, what kind of corrosion do we create under the asphalt? What kind of integrity do we create for the road because of our job? And it shouldn't be the responsibility for them. I mean, the city's responsible for that. So do you have any answers like what that, you know, do we do an impact study on this or will the road collapse because we, you know, jeopardize the integrity of it by drilling through it? And then that's going to be our responsibility, the city? And you said it's a $30,000 conduit and, you know, it's going to still be on her property?
Well, and Mr. French can ans, answer that in terms of how the construction's done, but, but you're right. I mean, would Mr. French answer the question?
Okay. Yes, councilman. The way the tunneling operation is constructed, as they push the conduit through, it fills the voids of the soil around it. So there is no collapse or loosening of the soil above the conduit. It's replacing the, the soil that it's, that it's going through at the same time that they're pushing the conduit through. So there, there, you know, there isn't a risk of subsiding or, or collapse under the conduit at that point. And they, they did excavate on the either, either end for the receiving and the jacking pits. And in those areas, they backfilled and paved over, but they're the small areas on each end.
Okay. Well, let's say if we did have issues with that conduit and it's on her easement and we had to dig it up, now who's going to pay for the road to be repaired there, the easement?
If, if there's an issue with the conduit or, or the road?
The road. If there's an issue with the conduit and a cause they had to go in there for repairs and dig it up?
Well, well Edison would be in there because it's their conduit and.
And then Edison's going to take care of her easement?
Well, what they will do is if they excavate to get to the conduit to replace it or to repair it, they would be responsible to put back in kind what was there before.
Okay. Well, here's a question, since it's a pretty much a public access, where everybody goes down that road to get to her business. Our heavy equipment, does it do any damage on that road? Our trucks or anything like that on her part of her easement?
Our, our, our trucks are, are not as heavy as the equipment that our providers supply.
So Councilmember Hesse, in response to your question, there are eight-ton trash trucks that go down that. There are sideboy loaders that go down that train. There's the, down that track, there's the street sweeper. Yes, there's a significant amount of, of heavy traffic going down that arterial ingress and egress road. And the other part of that is absolutely that road was not built to be able to handle that type of capacity on a regular basis. And therefore we are contributing more to that, to that, to the demise of that area.
Okay. Well, the last question I have is, do we have like the good neighbor policy, like you put up the fence, we're going to pay for half the fence kind of thing or? I mean, I'm just trying to look out to the future like Mr. Wilson said because I'm looking at what conduits have done and storm drains have done to our city, even with the dirt pushing out, there's always a, a cause for runoff of bad rain or something. And I don't think it's a liability to that business owner when it's the city's responsibility. So that's why I'm just looking at that little bit of road that we're looking at and we, you know, you know, we, we disturbed the soil on that road and there was no qualms on her and it was all on our end. And I understand the sweep, you know, they had to get the bigger sweep to get the, the wires through to make it easier, otherwise it'd be bound up on the end. So my main concern is, do we just go ahead and do that, you know, so we can maintain it? Or do we just, you know, let, pray that nothing happens? So I, I just wanted to know the engineering part, if that you think it's going to last how many years?
Councilman, the, the pavement will wear out before any trench failure on that, on that section.
Well, also, sir, the important part of the agreement is that, that Mrs. Miller is not asking us to maintain the property above the level that we're maintaining our own property. She's saying when the city maintains its property, that it, that that easement be maintained at the same level. She's not requesting that, that it be repaved to address exactly what you're talking about, the potential integrity demise because of the trench, because of the trenching. Now, I don't, I'm not saying that there is one because that's done in a, in a way that it should not happen. But as you know, through our road improvement projects, anytime you cut into a complete surface, you weaken the integrity of the surface.
That's my concern. Thank you for your answers.
Councilmember Robles.
I guess it's a point of personal privilege. I've been attacked, so I want to clear my name on this.
This is a time for questions.
No, I have a point of personal privilege. You attacked my credibility.
This is a time for questions.
I'm going to.
We are in recess for seven minutes.
I have a point of personal privilege.
We'll resume our regular session. The floor is yours, Councilmember Robles, if you have further questions.
I've conferred with legal counsel. We're going to wait until the comment period. We have Rosenberg rules that are going to be reviewed for when we have more time.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
I would like to ask staff, if this situation gets, if it gets reversed in the future, if the property owner who, if the Miller property, if hires a contractor or any of Miller's agents do any work on this easement, are we, will we be required, and then this easement gets disturbed, will the city be responsible for any of the cost to repair or restore the easement? You know, regardless of who disturbs the easement, this is how, how I read this, will, will the city be responsible for the restoration? First question.
So I think that you'd have to go to the section of the contract and that you'd have to have the city attorney explain what that, what that language is. Can you tell me the page you're referencing, sir?
Page 134, packet page 134. And also on packet page 144, it's stated on both pages. On, on 134, it's item two and on page, packet page 144, it's item, let's see, I guess, one, yeah, and two. Item two, the city of Grand Terrace shall indemnify Miller against all claims, demands, liabilities and expense arising out of the easements caused by any source, including any claims, demands, liability or expense related to performance of any work by any contractor or any subcontractor thereon. The obligation to indemnify shall be effective even if active or passive negligence or misconduct of Miller contributes to the loss or claim. So that sounds to me like regardless of who causes any damage or disturbance to this easement, either side of it, we're the ones responsible for the restoration of it. Is that correct?
That is what they have proposed, yes. This is their document.
Okay.
And if, if the council were to move forward with authorizing the, the amendments to the easement, one of the first things I would be doing is drawing back on that section because we should not be indemnifying for everything.
Okay. Second question. The entrance to the parking lot of the Miller property is across the alleyway from the transmission state or the, that station, yeah, for the big, not there, up here, yeah. There's the entrance to the back parking lot of the Miller property. Go across there. Okay, now, if you come down along there, is there any other entrance to that parking lot? Any other access to that parking lot along that easement?
No, there is not.
So how did we just, anyway, about disturbing traffic? I was just, whose traffic did we disturb? So I don't, but we don't need to answer that. I'd just like to ask one last question. Is any of the $5,000 punitive?
Is it $2,500 that the city is proposed to be paying, which is now the contractor will be paying the full $5,000? Is it punitive?
Yes.
I, I would say no. It would just be a resolution to the concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for can, further discussion and direction to staff for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen.
So, Madam Mayor, I would like to, it seems to me that some of the concerns that I've heard voiced by some of my fellow council members revolve around the absence of our attorney in, in the, this, but I don't know that there was any negotiations done here. This was just she, we were handed this and we're now going to, okay, so my concerns have to do with what I've voiced and that I feel like in the future, our city attorney's office should be involved in anything future with this.
With this particular item?
That's correct. With this item, with the negotiations of Miller, the settlement.
Okay. So, so are you saying that you want to have further discussions with the city attorney and Mrs. Miller regarding this agreement, that, that you have concerns that are not addressed in this agreement and you would like further negotiations to take place?
That's correct. The city attorney just, and I, we, we, in my previous comments, and he alluded to his concerns also with that one aspect of this requested settlement in that it makes us responsible for the entire maintenance and upkeep of the easement forever.
Okay.
And that's one of the concerns I have. And, and then I've also heard other concerns by other council members about the, the settlement amount and what it's, what it's justifiable for.
Okay. So it sounds to me like you are making a motion that we move forward with further negotiations with the city attorney and would there be other people part of that negotiation?
That's correct.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Because the easement was secured for mutual benefit, I think it would be appropriate to strike any section of the language and I will rely on the city attorney to do this that exits the responsibility for the easement, the portion that was described in the original easement, that is of the ownership of, of the claimant. I'd also like to think that if we're going to, if, if the contractor is willing to pay the $5,000, it would seem appropriate that the claimant would provide legitimate backup for any of the claims. In other words, not one of these, you know, pie in the sky, well, my people did this and they drove over to McDonald's and all that stuff, you know? We would expect the same situation in any circumstance. So a $5,000 lump sum, lump sum settlement is not, not acceptable to this entity for any reason. So those are the two items I would recommend that would be changed in this First Amendment to easement for ingress and egress. Then I would like to vote approval for it.
Okay. So your motion is to make those changes?
Yes.
Okay. And not to continue negotiation, but to just change those two items and then see if Mrs. Miller agrees?
Yes.
Okay. City manager?
No, that's, that would be consistent with what, what staff needs to move, to move forward. And I only say that because I, I want to remind the council that the city received a grant to put in the charging stations. The, the, I was just talking to staff now, the deadline for the grant is March the 26th. So any action that the council takes needs to occur before March 26th or we are going to lose that $175,000 that we have shelled out for this particular project.
Okay. Councilmember Robles.
So in my meeting with Ms. Miller, I went and I listened. Ms. Miller brought up some issues of potential hostile work environment that she wanted the full council to listen to. That was aside from this issue. I told her my best of my knowledge on this issue. And the other issue is that I'm not there to negotiate. I could only listen to her. She would have to file a, a claim. If she wanted the full council to listen to her concerns, then she would have to file the claim as a precursor to a lawsuit. And everything I read, any, any claim like this is a precursor to a lawsuit. My feelings were that this has been handled the way that our agendas are handled, it's last minute. I couldn't understand the nexus of why the rush on this until I read the addendum of the priorities list and I saw that we had a deadline that we're butting up against for these electric stations. I, what I had hoped for in a closed session is exactly the issues that the Mayor Pro Temps had brought up. I needed feedback on those kinds of issues and, and also what everyone's brought up here. My, my thought would be to kick back to staff. You have a, a authority to settle this, you know, you, you can settle it. But what I'm hearing from Mayor Pro Tem is he'd like to do a couple amendments and I guess move on. And Allen would like to kick it back to staff and come back. I'm open to, to either one if we can get a further clarity on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
So, hey, Mr. Duffy, do I understand you right when you said, does this, will this situation need to be settled for us to stay qualified for, to receive that grant money?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So Mayor Pro Tem, your motion is to make the two changes and to ask for receipts for the $5,000?
That's correct.
And staff, do you understand what those two changes are?
If the Mayor Pro Tem can clarify it one more time for the record, that'd be great.
Considering the fact that, and I guess you call it a justification, easement was secured for mutual benefit?
Right.
I think any language that, that steers away from that and, and throws the, in perpetuity, service and maintenance of, of asphalt easement that is, has, was originally designated in the 1983 easement as the other property owners, if we're going to steer away from that, then I, I don't agree with that. And so I think it would be appropriate for that language to be struck within the agreement.
Right. So.
The, the other item would of course then be the, just legitimate receipts for the $5,000 reimbursement.
Okay. So if I may restate.
And legitimate receipts.
Right. So if I may restate the motion, and I'm going to add one thing for consideration. So the first one would be to obtain receipts for the $5,000. The second one would be looking at page 144, their draft agreement is to strike paragraph one effectively regarding the maintenance and repairs and improvements.
That's what I saw, but then if you want to look at paragraph two, I mean, I want to kind of, yeah.
Exactly. That's where I was going to go next is with, with the council's approval is to carve this.
Yes.
Such that if it's, if the city's contractors do damage or something of that sort, I understand the indemnification, but this is broader than that. This could be anybody's contractors or any. contractors, or anybody else doing damage, and we would have to indemnify. I would strike it such that it only addresses city-caused damages.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hesse.
I'd like to second Mayor Protem's motion.
And, and to be fair, Mayor, is that motion what I just stated?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and your clarification.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, second by Councilmember Hesse, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Item number nine, approval of professional services agreement for business license auditing and administration services. Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Cynthia Fortune, representing the Finance Department. In front of you is a, the request to approve a professional services agreement for business licensing, auditing, and administration services. This, the staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability by ensuring the city receives the business license tax revenues it is entitled to per city ordinance while enhancing business license administrative services. Currently, the city has approximately, approximately 750 active business licenses, and our annual business license receipts or fees are approximately $90,000, $91,000. The iss, the, the city issued an RFP for business licensing, auditing, and administrative services. So bottom line, these are the two things they do for ongoing administration. We had received two, two bids, two RFPs, HDL Software and Avenue Insights. Avenue Insights is our current consultant for business administration. So they kept to the current fee that they had proposed several years ago, which is $12 per license, and HDL at $15 per license. Now, discovery and audit phase, that is the phase where they look for, based on the data that they have, or tools that they have, for maybe businesses that are operating in the city, and not actually paying business tax. Should they, should they be able to collect that? Their fee is 35%, both firms, for current year and prior, any future is all cities. So that's basically the same. So the difference really is the ongoing administration. Again, we currently do have Avenue Insights at $12 per license. As stated in the staff report, much as cost is an issue, there were a lot of things we actually took into consideration, and I will start with my staff's current communication with Avenue Insights. Unfortunately for us, because their main office is in Virginia, the office that we deal with is North Carolina, so when they close, after 2:00, even we cannot access them. So that alone would kill three hours of our staff time, and HDL is local, in California, Southern California, a few cities down, and that was one of the big things we were looking at. Second is also the ability for our staff to navigate through the software as fast as we can every time we get any, any inquiries from our business, our vendors, and, and that was just a li, a little difficult. So we did look at that, qualifications, methodology, experience, service level, customer service. Upon speaking to some of our business owners, the customer, level of customer service provided by our existing consultant was below par, at, to say the least. Our staff has constantly been discussing that with them, and it, it has not improved to the level that I would like to see it. I really would like to see, when I walk into a business, someone say, you know, I called their, your business license number, and they were quick, we weren't on hold too long, and they got back to us, you know, within 24 hours. Now, HDL's proposal actually says that should anyone call their business support center, they will not be on hold no longer than two minutes, and they will return within, within 24 hours of that phone call. So at this time, city staff is recommending, and so the difference between what we are paying today, at $12 per license versus $15, equates to about $2,000 a year annually. I think the return we will get from increased customer service, ability to navigate their software, and be able to call HDL from 8 to 5, is a big benefit to the city, to the staff, and to the vendors. So at this time, city staff is recommending to award a professional services agreement to HDL companies for business licensing, auditing, and administration services in an amount not to exceed $75,000. This is also a five-year contract, and we are expecting an annual fee of $15,000. Of course, we're also going to request that the, mayor be authorized to execute the agreement subject to city attorney approval as to form. Mr. Robert Gray of HDL is here in the audience tonight. He is the president of HDL Software, if you have any questions for the vendor. That ends my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Councilmember Allen, you have questions?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Fortune, if we have about an 80% renewal rate, approximately, of our business license, if that's about the average, and I believe that's what the staff report said.
Yes.
And that means that of the 750 licensed businesses, and that, that about 600 of them are renewing, that leaves about 150 that have not. So my question is, is the cost to get these business licenses renewed and the fees paid, will we recover enough to justify the cost to HDL? And after the first year, when they get all those licenses caught up, the next four years, then what's gonna, you know?
Okay, so if, our renewal period, as you know, ends in January, that, that's why we know by now, 80% has already renewed their business licenses. So what I was looking at is, you're right, between February and June. Yes, they have a process which is in the contract as to how they are going to follow up with those who have not renewed their licenses, whether it's by mail, by phone, by letter. And yes, I think our estimated cost for that was a few hundred dollars between now and June. Because this is an annual, this is an annual thing, that we have this many that do not renew, so they know this is something that they do from February all the way to December. And the way our business license is, your penalty increases each month that you are delayed from renewing your business license, 10% for each month that you delay. And yes, it will be their responsibility to collect that year-round. That's part of the ongoing administration.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, one of the things that, that the council should also be aware of is that, you know, the data that Ms. Fortune provided you included for businesses that are actually in the city, and for businesses that are actually doing business in the city, and that we also have a cap on our business, uh, business license fees. And so, one of the ways to tell what's happening is that the revenue is also important. So for example, because you have multiple businesses annually that will do business in the city one year, may, not the next year, you may have a certain number, but when you have big swings in terms of major companies that are, that are, you know, for example, business licenses are $35 maybe in general, but if you, if you're a, a larger business, it can go up to $1,200. So you might have a swing of, you know, 20 small businesses that are gone, and your revenue's minor affected, but of five businesses that generate $1,200, so when we come back, we'll, we'll bring you the data to show you what, what that looks like in terms of the dollar value. That's also a good way for you to measure how, what we're doing.
All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item from the public?
No, Madam.
I see one being raised by Bobby Forbes, and I don't think that she can traverse the stairs. Bobby Forbes, if you would please speak.
Thank you. I thank the staff and council for pursuing this. I know that two years ago, you couldn't even find out who had a business license in this community, so thank you for following through. I would like to know if it still takes 10 days if I'm contacting a tree trimmer to find out through the city if he has a license or not, or is that now computerized that you can tell me that day?
With the new business license software that, that maybe we'll have HDL talk about, yeah?
Okay, we'll have him talk about that after public comment's over.
Okay, so if he can answer that, that would be great. So thank you. This has been a struggle for me and another woman that lived in Grand Terrace for a long time. She was the first one to bring it to my attention a couple years ago. She is no longer with us, and I know that she's probably smiling up there, giving you a thumbs up for thanking, and thanking you for taking care of this. There are so many business fronts in Grand Terrace that didn't have a license that was current, and it was really disturbing. And I try to follow most of the rules, I'm sure I don't follow them all, but I try, and it's important for the city to get the revenue that's due them, and I thank you once again. So I look forward to your answers.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any other requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion. Mr. Gray, if you would please come forward. Did you have a few things that you'd like to say?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. To answer the question, so the software system that we provide, we certainly keep up to date. It's a 24-by-7 access, both for city staff that are trying to access the registry for data analytics or inquiry needs, but there's also a public access that has limited information, only what's, what can be published publicly, but would allow you to search by business name, or a contractor license number, some limited information in order to identify in real-time if that individual or entity has active license with the city. So it's, it's very quick, can be done online from a custom domain that will be set up for the city of Grand Terrace specifically for this business registry.
And did you say that would be part of the website?
Yes, it's part of the website. There'll be a, it's grandterrace.hdgov.com would be the website that, that would hold the business registry, and that is where businesses go online to file, pay, apply, if they want to do it online. They can certainly, of course, give us a call, or still conduct business by mail, if that's their preference, but then also that is where the public would be able to access. Typically, there's a link from the city's core website, so they would go online, there would be a list, they would say, I want to look up a business license, and it would bring them right to the search screen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we didn't have benefit of, of that discussion before, so are there questions at this time of Mr. Gray? All right, thank you very much. So, further discussion by council or consideration of a motion at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with HDL for business license auditing and administrative services for a term of five years and a maximum cost of $75,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement subject to city eternal, attorney approval as to form.
I second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Robles, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item 10, award construction for Mount Vernon Safety Improvement, TSR Construction, an inspection in the amount of $268,350. Director of Public Works, Mr. Allen French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Here to present this item for the, this is for the Mount Vernon H-SIP project. This report supports goal number one, ensuring fiscal viability, and goal number two, maintaining public safety. In December, Caltrans issued a letter of approval to construct the Mount Vernon Safety Project. The improvement project is estimated at $374,000. In January, the city advertised the project for construction, and we received only one bid for that project. At that time, the city contacted the state who administers the H-SIP grant, and notified them of the one bidder. We did have to do follow-up. The state allowed us to submit Exhibit 12F, which is a public interest finding form, and we provided that information to them for their review. As of, so we were going through that process, and it included feedback from other contractors that did not bid for their individual regions. So, as of today, I was able to make contact with the state to find out an update on the public interest finding, and found that they weren't going to move forward with that, so their recommendation to us was to rebid the project. So at this point, I'm recommending to the council to reject the one bid that we received, and authorize staff to rebid the project for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Mount Vernon Safety Improvement Project. I'm happy to answer any questions, should the council have any.
Thank you, Director French. Any questions at this time? All right, any requests to speak from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council.
Motion to reject the bid.
I'll second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, we'll move to item 11, council top priorities 2019, 2020, fiscal year review update log, Mr. City Attorney Harold Duffy. The city manager. I just, I just changed you. So, Adrian, you're now the city manager, and I apologize. Mr. City Manager Harold Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is a follow-up to the June 12, 2019 City Council Priority Workshop, where the council had over 110 projects that were listed, either top, high, or priority projects. Of those 110 projects, about 50 of those projects were actually rated as top priority projects. In addition to that, the council also established a future council agenda process, which also added additional items to the process, and so this is sort of a follow-up to the council to kind of give you an understanding of where we are with some of these projects. And a top priority projects were actually listed in the sense that there was some action that was going to occur in this particular year, and so therefore, staff did attach a Priority A Project List Update Log, and that log will be placed on the city's Intranet site. The log is something that, because it is a, a planning document, it, the dates change on a, on a regular basis, we try to update those. We will be printing out this log on a, on a quarterly basis, and giving it to the council. So tonight, I'm just going to go over some of the particular priority, top priority projects that we have, and I would ask the council to, please stop me at any point in time if they have any questions about any particular project. So this is a purchase and sales agreement with the Greens Group. It's a 4.780-acre site on Barton Road. We anticipate the escrow closing May 1, 2020. We had weekly meetings with the Greens Group to talk about logistics. One of the particular items the council wanted to see, once the Greens Group came forward and presented a, three concept plans, was the Green Belt area that was next to, on the corner of Barton and, uh, Pres, uh, Canal, and during that timeframe, the property's currently owned by Blue Mountain Vista, but they have expressed interest in selling that property, and we currently have the property being appraised. I expect an appraisal back within the next couple weeks. Next, we have the release of the Gateway Specific Plan, the NOP, and if you have any questions about this, Steve Weiss, our Planning Director, will be able to answer those questions. The Gateway Specific Plan will encompass this particular area. It's about 132 acres, right, right near the interchange and Taylor and Commerce Way. This is Taco Bell, this is the site plan for, where, this is the location where Taco Bell is going to be going. Taco Bell, we anticipate by mid-March that they would be getting some of their entitlements in terms of construction, demolition permits. Mr. Weiss can elaborate on the plans that have been submitted so far. on the plans that have been submitted so far, if the council has any questions on that particular item. As the council is aware, the grocery outlet did open on February 20, 2020. Currently, they have a couple of permits that are still outstanding in terms of, they're trying to get some signs to follow their corporate structure, to have additional signage on the particular area. And a planning staff is also working with them on those particular areas. And once again, Mr. Weiss is available to ask, answer any questions the council may have.
About the signs?
About the project, if you'd like.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, is the issue with the signs just like size and color or something? They're going to get the extra signs. Is that correct? Or is there a, is there some issue with even getting the extra signage for grocery outlet?
Councilmember Allen and council, there is no issue getting the signs. We're working with the owner of the grocer's outlet and the entire center to come up with a comprehensive sign program that makes everything look better, because they are actually fixing up the entire center.
You know, and one of the things that we are going to be working on is that when a corporate company comes to the city and they present their plans, they tell us that they want, this is what they're looking for, this is what they're, these are the signs they use. So, our current process would have them go through the process and then submit a sign program afterwards. And so, we want to make that a streamlined process by actually incorporating that during the entitlement process.
Okay, thanks. I remember the facade that we were going to have with, had the different wording on the...
Proteus, Organics.
Right. And I like that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Welcome.
This is the surgical center that is currently in the process of getting their entitlements. We expect that the building to start sometime in June 2020. They did submit their plans in, I believe, at the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
And so, staff has reviewed them and turned them back to them, so we're waiting for This is the parking lot of Mr. TV Video, and one of the things that we had listed in our overall program was to create a parking district to be able to allow smaller lots that are on high commercial corners to be able to develop shared parking to entice users that have frequent traffic, drive-throughs, and things of that particular nature. So, Mr. Weiss is working on developing a parking study and a process to institute that. He's anticipating July 15, 2020. Kaz Ramen, this is Como's. Kaz Ramen wants to open up, it started out with as a Japanese coffee shop right next to Kaz Ramen. If you've gone by Kaz Ramen anytime from 12:00 noon to 12:00 a.m., you'll see quite a few people gathering out front. And so, one of the things that the owner wants to do is to create an overflow area in terms of initially with this coffee shop that would be open 24 hours for people to go over here to wait and enjoy boba's and coffee, and then come over to Kaz, to Ramen. The process has changed a little bit. The project has changed a little bit in terms of, it has evolved into a Japanese-style sit-down restaurant, and he's currently working on his ADA schematics in order to make sure that it's ADA compliant for this sit-down, sort of sit-down restaurant. Originally, in our overall plan, we had talked about Hollywood Video being converted to Domino's Pizza. That process didn't go through at this point in time. Actually, Domino's is going to be moving over to the former Chill site. And so, the property owner for the Hollywood Video is entertaining, splitting the 4,000-square-foot building into multiple uses, restaurants, and some other potential uses. This is the Eben Fuels Project. We believe the entitlements should, process should start May 15. Eben Fuels is a pyralysis plant that transfers plastics to multiple types of fuel. It is estimated that this project could generate over half a million dollars a year in sales tax to the city once it comes into play. The developer is putting in about $20 million. This is the former recycling plant that was off Barton Road, and that has been cleaned up. He purchased it. The primary, the primary company owner, or the owner of the company, is Travis Park. He also owns Cal Recycling, California Recycling. This is the information about the Blue Mountain Acquisition. We, this is regarding our Blue Mountain Grant, Blue Mountain Trail Grant. We received actually a couple grants. One from HCF, Habitat Conservation Fund, of $222,000, paired with some development impact fees. We anticipated the original project to cost about $500,000. We were also then earmarked in the state budget about $1.2 million from a simply person raise. So, with those combined funds, our goal is to acquire, build a trail head, and also acquire property. We have a consultant on board, and that consultant is going to have a community meeting that is scheduled for March 26 to talk about the various options. And some people have said, you know, what's happening? We haven't seen anything. So, over the last year, the consultant has gone through and done topography, walked the different trails, designed the trail head, and will have those concepts come before and share those items with the community at the March 26 meeting. And if the council has any other questions, Mr. Weiss can elaborate on this particular item. Next item is we have fire station agreement. We anticipate bringing this agreement back, lease agreement back to the council in April 2020. The council gave staff direction to look at modifying our existing lease of $1 with the fire department, to look at monetizing the facility and getting at least, at a minimum, to help with repairs of the facility. And so, we anticipate going back to, coming back to the council in open session sometime in This particular item is transit occupancy tax, and the Greens Group project is proposing that a hotel site in their particular location, part of the desire to have a hotel is the revenue that it generates through the transit occupancy tax. And what happens there is that when a person rents a hotel room, there is a tax associated with that night rental. It could be anywhere from 5% to 14% of the nightly rental rate. And unlike sales tax, where you have an 8% sales tax, that sales tax is divided between the city, the county, the state. With a TOT tax, all of that revenue generated, the entire 5% to 12%, is generated to the city coffers. And one of the best things about a TOT tax, the primary, it's primarily paid for by non-residents as people visit and stay in the hotels. And so, part of this process is that, as we listed in the staff report, there are milestones that the city would need to undertake if they were wanting to do a TOT tax in this year, or a TOT tax in another general election year. Or the city could do a special election, but I think as the city clerk indicated, a special election would be three to four times the normal cost of a, of a regular general election cost by adding it on to a November regular election. One of the other items the council asked us to look at was to establishing a youth commission. We did come back to the council and received directions to add a youth commissioner to the Park and Recreations Commission. The city clerk is continuously working with the school district, trying to get a youth person assigned to our Park and Recreations Commission. We also talked about special event support, and that one of the concerns the council had was that having top-level staff manage these particular projects. I did want to say that this last walk on Blue Mountain, based upon the logistics that was established by the past legislative, past executive assistant, the planning for this year was really laid out very easily. And I'd like to thank Todd Nakasaki, along with Josh Monzone, Executive Assistant. Todd is the Management Analyst, and Heidi, Gary, sorry, excuse me. They did the majority of the logistics work on this project, and they worked with the maintenance staff, and it was, went very smoothly. And so, that's a credit to the past planning process and their ability to follow through with that. And they also, we have to also give a shout-out to the fire department and also to the shares department. They were great on-the-ground logistics for the entire process. And we had about 700 people show up for the, for the walk this year. Under human resources, Ms. Forbes can talk about this. We have done some recognition programs, employee pickings in the past. We've talked about merit, employee merit increases, one-time merit increases count, and we did that in March 2017. We also have done and will continue to work on employee appreciation programs. Our proposal is to come back to the council in May 2020 to go over those particular, particular programs. In terms of employee recognition, we currently have a standing weekly, I'm sorry, monthly meeting on the first Thursday of the month, where we have Good News Thursday, where the employees all get together. We talk about the good successes that we've had over the, over the past month. Under business license, for business license, we have reviewed the fees. That's ongoing. And we have learned over the process that a business license fee is considered a tax, and therefore, it requires a measure to raise those particular taxes. Then we also, as part of our desire to have better access to business license and better access to the data, the councils are actually approving an item tonight, or approved an item tonight. So, that's one of the milestones there for March 2020. The city clerk had some items to increase content on the Intranet, and she's actually doing that. And our goal is to have those items continue on from September 1 to 2020. She'll be putting this log on the Intranet along with the city's employee orientation manual and other particular items. In addition to that, there was also some conversation that we've had over the last year and a half about the telephone system at City Hall and that the desire for the public to reach a live person. And so, the city clerk has implemented several things, including updating and changing the after-hour phone message so that it's clear to provide residents with resources for after-hours when the city's not available. One of the other items that the city clerk had one of her top priorities was the use of Facebook Live and Twitter, and she did, she wants to report back to the council in June 2020, and primarily because if we go down that path, we believe that we're going to need additional resources in order to implement that to our existing outreach on information out to the public regarding the meetings. Just wanted to remind the council that currently, the city council meetings are played daily. The first meeting of the month at 2:00, the second meeting of the month at 6:00, every day on Channel 3, and also, it's on-demand on AT&amp;T, U-verse. In addition to that, we also, you can also get the council meetings on YouTube and also from the city clerk's website through live Also, some of the things that the city clerk was asked to do was to have better access to our agendas and our budgets. And so, the city clerk places the agendas and the budgets in our public library, so they're accessible at that point in time. Also, the city, on 7/30/2019, staff contacted the library and asked to place the council agendas and the budgets in those areas. Also, the city clerk also implemented a community posting board out front. One of the requirements is for the city to post their agendas in a place that's accessible for the public. Our formal process was posting those agendas in City Hall in the foyer between the city council and the library, but those doors are closed in the evening. So, we implemented the post-up community board out in front of City Hall. Our goal, too, is to also put up a community board over at the mail stop where, and where the grocery outlet center is. We also are working on the neighborhood recognition program that the council approved. Mr. Weiss can kind of give you a little more elaboration on that particular item?
Yes, as far as the neighborhood recognition program, one of the areas is landscaping. The Pride, Grand Terrace, has beautiful homes, and to exhibit some of the yards that really deserve an award, we're working, I am working with the Women's Club to come up with a strategy as to how to do this, probably either on a quarterly or even a monthly basis. So, I will be reporting back to the council with our framework for you to consider.
So, the goal there was to try to find an organization that would go through the community and give some recommendations to us for recognition of the particular program. This is the annual acknowledgement program that we're working on. We will be back to the council in the near future regarding, the council in the past has recognized employees, I'm sorry, recognized volunteers. And so, we want to come up with an annual recognition program that we, instead of recognizing individuals one at a time, but come up with an annual program that we can recognize the individuals and then celebrate at one point in time. The other thing was the council agenda modifications. That was one of the recommendations that the council had, and I believe that we have gone through and modified the agenda to incorporate certain aspects that the council recommended. The Highway Safety Improvement Program, this project was before the council today for approval. This project is, was approved and should have been implemented by November 2018. And so, we've had a number of stumbles on this particular project, and so, we will be working very closely with staff to try to bring this back to the council as quickly as possible after our rebid of this project.
Mr. Duffy, do we have a date certain that we need to use that money, or we lose it?
We do not. I don't believe, we're not in jeopardy of losing the money, but Mr. French can comment on that.
That's right. They are date-specific, but as you show progress going through invoicing and providing documentation, that extends the date.
And we've shown progress?
Yes, ma'am.
Really? Okay.
We're working with the state.
So, one of the things that we learned from last year is that it's extremely important to have this project bid and under construction before September, because then the federal government will then lock down this appropriation, and you have to wait until January. That was one of the issues that we had in order to proceed to bid this last time. And so, we, since the council did reject those bids today, one of the things that we're going to be doing is going out to bid immediately. And one of the other things that we've learned also is that the requirements for a state bid and the requirements for a federal bid are different in terms of the timelines. And so, we'll be... And so we'll be mindful of that as we move this project forward.
All right, thank you.
This is Fitness Park Canopy. This is really, the canopies are an example of, of what we're looking for. One of the things that the council actually, we listed, staff listed this as part of our high priority projects and council moved this over to one of the top priorities because over at Fitness Park, we have a number of playground equipment that doesn't have any natural shading like some of the other parks have. And so we've heard concerns, complaints from parents that it's, it's too hot for the kids to play on. And so staff has been trying to price the cost for these particular canopies. And in addition to that, excuse me, council actually earmarked some of the bond proceeds to actually pay for the canopy to be installed at the Fitness Park. And so if there are any questions on that, Mr. French is available to talk about our progress on that. Okay. This is the Preston Signal Project, which the council just approved today. I'm sorry, approved the acceptance today. This is the Commercial Way Expansion. This is part of our overall gateway-specific plan. The particular notes about this particular project is the infrastructure for this project is paid for through our CPNA. And what that will do is, that will get, that will pay for 60% of the total project. And so we're using the other 40% that we have in diff fees and measure and other, other funds, development impact fees. And so we anticipate this project coming into fruition along with the storm drain resolution for the city in the next year or so. We expect construction to start of this project around 2021.
Councilmember Allen?
You've mentioned previously the Preston Signal Upgrade and how, you know, this, today we signed off on that. So that's going to be removed from the top priority list, correct? Because that's a completed project.
Yes, sir.
So will something take its place or will that? And the reason I say that is because something else that happened this evening is the, the agenda item that we've removed from, you know, that we didn't do action on, which was the Michigan Avenue, the safety thing, item seven or eight or nine. That is a pretty high priority thing. And should that go back on the list in a, and move, should we move that back onto the list into a higher priority? Because now we have to put it out for rebid and all that again? I mean, it's a pretty important project, is the safety corridor.
Mr. Duffy, is that coming off the list?
No, it is not coming off the list because what we're going to be doing is we're going back to rebid that and bring that back to the, to the council. And so-
Where is that on the list right now?
Yeah, it's, it's currently on the list and-
On, on what category?
It's on, in Public Works.
Priority A, right?
Yes, it's actually the number, on packet page two, on 451.
The Mount Vernon Intersections Highway Safety Improvement Program?
Yes.
Okay. And so that, that'll stay there as a, and since we're rebidding it and all, then put it back up for bid?
Sir, and one of the, one of the things, the reason why you have items that are listed in the high priority is that there's something, there's either funding associated with it or there's agencies, there's, there's movement that needs to occur within that particular project. And so when we believe that we can deliver on a project within the year, that's how that lands in that particular area. Now, if a project is, that we have in a high priority, actually has some additional funding that occurs, we will then move that to the council and move that on the higher, higher in the priority list.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes, thank you. Mr. French, on packet page 480, and going back to the Fitness Park Canopy, it says, "Staff Recommendations that, with the item was, was presented to the council during our workshop, council evaluated that this top priority is assigned. Bond proceeds to the project, staff is currently pricing the canopies and should be ready to appear before the council before purchase recommendations sometime before June of 2019."
I'm sorry, Councilmember-
It says June before 2019, I mean-
It should be June 2020, sir.
So will we have the canopy before the summer hits then?
That's our goal, sir, yes.
Okay. I was looking at that type letter, I don't know if we already approved it or something, but I just want to make sure we get that, so.
Absolutely.
Just a question, thank you.
This is the Mount Vernon Slope. We did submit our grant application and one of the things that the council did was to approve a hazard mitigation plan several years ago. And when, when you approve a hazard mitigation plan, that means whenever there are emergency funds available from, from particular disasters or issues, that means that the city would have access to be able to apply for any residual funds in those particular areas. We did submit this program to Cal OES and we were not successful in receiving the funding at this time, but we are on the list for any, to be notified of any future funding. This is one of the items that we also have listed on our legislative platform and we have made contact with both Senator Leva and also with, I'm sorry, Assemblyperson Reyes to request the urgency of additional funding for this particular area and-
Councilmember Hesse, you got a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, about the Mount Vernon Slope, I know it was brought to attention, are we working with Colton on this too, for that slope? Because I'm still seeing the truck traffic and I'm worried, you know, about the erosion of the road still and all the existing projects, you know, what's going on. And when Edison was doing their work down there, I noticed, you know, they used a lot of heavy equipment going up and down that road.
Well, sir, here's what, and I think Mr. French can comment on that, we actually did work with the city of Colton and we, I believe at the, down the hill, they, they do, they have now installed the no-truck on, on the route.
Are we going to enforce this on our side?
I think one of the things that we can do is we can, we can work with the Sheriff's Department along with Colton PD to try to put something in, in place. And one of the things we can also do too is that we can and we should send notices to the logistics centers in High Grove that use, come straight down through, through town. Because that, that is a, that is an issue and they come in all, all hours of the night.
And that's besides the erosion of the road and the hillside, my main concern is the-
Sure.
The brakes being lost, you know, um, safety of people. I mean, I know we had one fatality with a school bus on there, somebody ran into the school bus, so that's a big concern of mine and I'm sure everybody else too, but you know, it's, you know, you see it all the time and then the erosion, you know, we're going to keep paying and paying and paying, trying to get funds and stuff, so.
Right.
They're going to keep on hampering that issue, so just wondering about it.
So we had anticipated this project costing anywhere from $3.7 to $4 million and the council did earmark some of their redevelopment bond proceeds to try and have available for matching, for matching if we could receive the-
Are they going to, on that project, are they going to do a walkway on that? Because you see residents walk up and down that hill and it's dangerous for them. Are they planning on the sidewalk or something on that?
Well, I believe the estimate that we received, and Mr. French can comment on that, I thought that was just to shore up the side of the mountain, I didn't know.
That is to shore up the side, but again, allowing a little extra road, road width on the side for a walkway, that, that we could incorporate that into the plans.
Okay. Because my concern was, I actually saw a young lady pushing a baby carriage up there with some kids and, all right, well, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Never mind.
Councilmember Robles?
On this agenda item, you know, it says, "Receive and File or Provide Direction." And then there's quite a bit of stuff here to provide direction on. I would think we, you know, we had a council priorities workshop. I've seen other cities that they do it quarterly because they don't want to have us, council people, keep asking stuff to be put on the agenda. So that's something I'm just going to throw out there. But my question I asked you privately and I ask, I have a little further is, we did hire a consultant to help us with this process. You know, it's, it's, the magnitude of the cost of this is something I don't, I don't see how we're going to figure out without a grant.
Right.
What I'm, on my guidance on this is, when you have a slope that's a major artery to a hillside community and the potential of landslide or whatever, I would like to see what, you know, like you, you're saying, the legislative, but also what did OES say, you know, as far as this project, are they concerned or, you know, they don't see it as a priority or a future priority depending on their funding ability? I guess what I'm leading as, maybe we need clearly a specific agenda item just on, on this subject to-
And we can certainly bring that back because I, I think it's, one of the things that we tried to stress when you approved the hazard mitigation plan was that this is a significant issue. If that's, you know, if that slope goes down, it's going to take out any vehicles that are, that are, that are on the road. And as we, as you said, as we had a conversation about this, this is, while the slope is in Grand Terrace, a significant portion of the road is in Colton. And it is a significant issue that we laid out in the hazard mitigation plan and that we, when I met with Senator Leva, I, we expressed this concern and we, we said that this is a significant issue and we should continue. And actually, about a year and a half ago, two years ago, we even met with Congressman Pete Aguilar to express our concern about this particular issue. And so any time that we can elevate this issue or bring somebody else in, I, I, I concur, we can bring this back for a future discussion because it's only a matter of time that something's going to happen if we don't shore up the slope. So this is our EV charging station, which we are hoping that we will be able to get charged on March, the, March 24th, 2020. This is a three-year CIP. This is the, we would like to have construction start on year three and four on, by September 2020. We're currently doing the, the design and the bids specs for this particular project because we receive about $200,000 annually in funding for this particular project. We don't have the proceeds collected, but we have access or we've talked with the state TRIP program, they call it, and it's the Total Rehabilitation Infrastructure-
Total Road Improvement Program?
Total Road Improvement Program. And so we are working with them and what they, what they do is they, they, they work with multiple jurisdictions to issue bonds that are supported from your, your Measure I funding. So instead of one city going out and doing a, doing a bond for, for the road improvements, they will go out and they will do for four or five cities, they'll issue that. And so they've indicated that the amount of money that we currently receive from our Measure I money can support about $1.7 million that they believe they can deliver to us by July. And then we can then implement years three and four of our, of our, of our CIP program. So we were examining that, there's a process going through that. I set them up with Ms. Fortune and she's working through the, the process in terms of what, what, the financial data that we need to provide. This is the Barton Road Interchange Maintenance Agreement. So while the Sandbag and Caltrans have designed and will implement and deliver this project to us, there are some ongoing maintenance which the city would be responsible for and Mr. French can comment on that.
Yes, part of the maintenance agreement is like the lighting, the bridge lighting, the city will be responsible for the bridge lighting because those are for city lights. And Edison will be responsible for maintaining the regular street lighting throughout the project, but we will be responsible for the energy charges. So we're just finalizing an agreement to, to get that all executed for the end of the project.
So we anticipate delivery of the project in April and as people can see, the roundabout is open and, you know, things are moving.
Mayor Protem?
Didn't we also have some kind of responsibility for maintaining the center circle? It seemed to me that there was something in there.
Yes, Mayor Protem, that monument will be the responsibility.
That's what I thought, okay, so that is part of the budget, all right.
Yes, it is. There's also a desire for the council to have a Barton Road feedback sign and we anticipated installing this sometime in the later than June. What we're doing is a part of the HIS program, when we bid that particular project out, it includes speed feedback signs. We will incorporate them having to supply some additional, give us the cost for additional speed feedback signs and then we will implement, we will, we will install those immediately once we get the, get the cost for, for those particular signs. This is the fire station roof repair. This is what our current responsibilities are for our existing lease. So we are working with the Fire Department, getting estimates and trying to ensure that the facility is, is maintained. This was the Prop 68 grant that the city submitted for and we originally notified that we did not receive the grant. But one of the things that the grant agencies offer is the ability to have a debrief in terms of where you scored well and where you didn't score, so I've requested that. An important part to note, there were over $450 million in grant requests for, for this cycle of Prop 68. They had about $297 million in fun, in funds available. And the majority of those funds went to disadvantaged communities. So right away in the process of the scoring, if you are not a disadvantaged community, you lose about 30 points right off the bat. And so even though we tried in our grant application to identify that the school district serves more than just Grand Terrace, it serves other, other boundary areas, we still did not receive those points and that was part of our disadvantage of, of being, being successful to this. On the bright side of the Prop, Prop 68 is that there is a one-time annual allocation of resources based upon population. And the city will receive, we receiving about $200,000 in, in, in grant funds for recreation this year.
Councilmember Allen had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Duffy, I just real quick, back up to the fire station roof repair and I just want to ask if, in the roof repair costs to replace them, perhaps has any thought been given to renewable energy source roof and, and energy storage? And if not, maybe we could think about that, I mean, I-
For, for these costs, no, because that's a tile roof, majority of the roofers estimated removing the tile roof and then repapering it. Evidently it's the paper that's cracking and splitting. The tiles are really in good shape, it's just the paper underlying. So this is really-
Oh, I see.
-a re-underlayment-
Okay.
-of the whole roof.
Thank you.
So we have not, but one of the things we can do, sir, is we can certainly examine that in terms of working with the Fire Department because they pay the utilities and they might want to look at ways, ways to reduce their costs. This is the Animal Control Ordinance that was adopted by the council on October 2nd, 2019. Some of the important components of the, the Modified Animal Control Ordinance included the ability to go from two dogs to four dogs in residential, single-family units. Also, another important point was when your vaccinations were due, the city council requested that staff modify that where your vaccinations also determine the date in which your licenses will be, will be due. Before, regardless of whether your, your vaccination date- your vaccination date was not used to required to show proof of a valid vaccination along with your, with your dog license. This is parking citation backlog. We actually had, before Mr. Weiss came along, we had parking citations, the backlog being that people were, they paid and they protested their parking ticket. And so we had, I believe, 30, maybe 60 days, 90 days worth of backlog in terms of a hearing and either granting their, their protest or not. So Mr. Weiss has gone through that and we are now current in terms of hearing those parking citations. This is a conditional use permit for National Logistics. They are located on Main out near Taylor Street. This is a logistics company that landed in that particular facility without a business license. And they indicated that they believe that the zoning allowed them to be in this particular location. We pushed back and required a conditional use permit and they are working with us to get that CUP in place. So that consisted, that is the end of all of the top priority projects. I understand and I agree with Councilperson Robles, this was a lot to try to digesture in this meeting. And so our goal here is that all the items that are in high priority, top priority, those items should be coming back before the council on an individual basis. If there is a desire for the council for us to bring back these on a quarterly basis, we will provide you with the updated log on a quarterly basis. But you'll also have access to the log online that's updated on a regular basis. And if it is the council's desire to say, I would like to see the public works priority projects, we can certainly bring that back, all of those back and give you an update. Or, you know, or we can bring them all back at one point in time.
Councilmember Allen.
Why is the REC Center a top priority under planning and development?
I believe in the initial process, it was to try to find a way to help the REC Center come to a, they wanted, they were trying to find a permanent location in the city. And I believe that planning and development was helping them with the research in terms of deciding that. And I believe they, when we did this, they were actually in a DAB, a review process, trying to determine whether they wanted to acquire property to convert into their daycare, after-school recreation program.
So periodically, our staff follows up to see whether stuff needs to stay in the top priority list or be reconsidered? For example, what if REC Center isn't, doesn't, isn't in Grand Terrace anymore and has a permanent location somewhere else? Then, you know.
Right. But one of the things that we do do with the REC Center is, the reason why I think they're probably still on the list is because we, we, we do provide them with community development block grant funds for different programs. I think in this particular case, they were actually working with planning to review a property that they were, they were actually looking at establishing a program.
Oh, okay, that's.
That's why they, they came in as a high, as a, as a high priority.
Do we, is the CUP in 40 Acre Green Belt and Project in 40 Acre Green Belt up above there, are those both the same thing? Is that two different things in the top priority list? Or is that something just?
Page 452.
452, yep.
So the Project 40 Acre Green Belt area is the area, that's, that's just with the, the concept of the ranch, the agricultural area? And then you said there was another one you said, sir?
Yeah, down below there, it says CUP in 40 Acre Green Belt. Is that for that tractor, I mean, that trailer storage lot? Or is that?
That would be for the Aegis Project, Daryl Morris Project.
In the green one?
The CUP in the, it says in the 40 Acre Green Belt? Maybe that's mistitled because Aegis Project is not in the particular area. I think that you may be right, sir. We need to, we need to retitle that because there is a CUP request in, in that area. That's the, that's the area down near the wash. And that's separate, that's, even though it's a part of the entire acreage, there was a process that we had where we had the ag overlay. And then there's a separate application for a CUP for that, that trucking facility that's going through the process. So I think.
O'Brien property.
I think you are correct.
Okay.
O'Brien property.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we'll retitle that. So that's, it's clear.
Further questions at this time? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Bring it back to council. And you're looking for direction at this time? Or is this a receive and file?
It is a receive and file unless, unless the council would like to provide some, some direction. And I think I've received information that how you'd like to see the material come back to you.
Mayor Protem.
I'd just like to reserve a slot, although I realize this premature, but we had, had some discussions so far about a, a whole city traffic study.
Yes.
And it's a, you know, as we've talked about it over time, I think we've discovered that it's a good tool, a good economic development tool. That, you know, since we've been, you know, in existence as a city for a period of time, we've done lots of piecemeal stuff because things get developed piecemeal. But it's more difficult when a developer comes into town and they go, okay, so what's gonna be in here? You know, or, oh, you guys changed it to 30 miles an hour down through Barton Road for a certain portion. Wow, that's good. That kind of stuff.
And, and sir, one of the things that we mentioned in the staff report and packet page 453, that another way that the council has established some high priorities is through your future agenda process. And we had that list is on page 453. And the item that you're referencing, I believe, is on that, on that particular page.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
You know, I'm, I'm concerned about just doing a receive and file because I see this as you're asking for direction. And if we don't provide direction, then it's gonna be, well, we brought it to you on, in March and you guys didn't say anything. So, and I, I think, and this is too much to do outside of a workshop setting. And I'm also sensitive to, did we do this just in November? We, a priorities workshop?
It was in, it was June of 2019.
Wow.
19, yeah.
Okay. So then, why don't we make it an annual exercise then? And that way, we give you direction and we have an ample opportunity for everyone to weigh in.
Okay.
I like having an update on where we are with these projects more often than annually. I don't know that we necessarily need to go through every single project. Although this does show the magnitude of the projects that our staff is working on. And so, point taken.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure of the best way to update us, but I know that I frequently have questions about where we are with a lot of these projects. And the updates are not timely. If there's, if there was a way that we could look them up on, online, that would, that would be excellent.
Absolutely. And so we'll do, we'll have this log that the staff will continuously update. And so one of the, one of the reasons why we put together this report is to reemphasize is that the high priority items will be coming back to the council within, within the year. But as Councilperson Robles indicated, that, you know, if we have a, a annual review in the workshop setting, if the council wants to move items from the high priority and top priority, then the council can, can do that. What staff would normally do is that if there's funding for any of the high priority or top priority projects, we would then move, move it over. So without, we are driving force. But if the council has an item that they now believe is a higher priority, like for example, some of the items on your future agenda list. At some point in time, we address those issues, but where there are longer, more detailed projects, you might want to say, this is a, this is a top priority. And then it would be adjusted. So the concept of having a revisit in June of 2020 or somewhere before the budget cycle is actually a good, a good, good exercise.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I see this, thank you, Mayor. I see this as a movable feast. And it's great because we have a list. And from that list, we can then amend it from time to time as, as appropriate. So I would motion for receive and file.
Motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNamara voting yes.
Thank you. We do not have requests for future agenda items to discuss. So City Manager Communications, is there anything left to say?
See, I'll make it quickly. I'll make it quick. So the Community Day Committee is still moving forward and they're, have some great ideas. They are scheduled to meet on March 12th this week from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The committee is really brainstorming on some ideas and concepts. And so we certainly anticipate this being a, a very active and exciting community day this year on June 6th from 3:00 to 9:00 PM. Also, we have the Friends of the Library, Grant Terrace Branch Library, $5 per bag book sale. You can bring your own bag or they have, they'll have a bag for you. But it's really, you'd be amazed at how many people are there for exciting, for the, for the books that they can get all put in the bag. And paperback, hard covers, collectibles. It's an exciting event. Also, we are working with the United States Census 2020 kickoff event for Monday, March 23rd, 5:30 to 6:30 PM in our community room. And we're inviting all of the local nonprofits to come forward and participate to ensure that everybody's counted. There's also a blood drive that's going to occur on April 8th, 2020 at the, the community room from 1:30 PM to 7:30 PM. In addition, as everybody's aware about the coronavirus, and so this particular thing is gonna be, appear, this ad will appear on Channel 3. It'll also be on our webpage. But one of the other things that we wanted, I wanted to express to the council is that we are in the process of taking measures to provide our employees with additional resources in terms of hand sanitizers, things of a particular nature, and, and having an open door policy in case some of the employees have some concerns with the, with the amount of traffic that they're having to experience being, being out front and in the front of City Hall. So we are working on a process. We'll update the council on what that's going to be in order to help our employees feel comfortable as they, as they exercise their, their duties here in Grand Terrace. And with that, that's the end of my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. At this time, we will recess to closed session. We have one item, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property is 22582, City Center Court, APN 0277-161-30. City negotiator G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, negotiating party San Bernardino County Fire Department, under negotiation price and terms of payment. If you are not here when we return, we will be adjourning to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We will be closing in memory tonight of Grand Terrace resident William J. McKeever. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So thank you all for being here tonight. And at this time, we are in recess to closed session. All right, we reconvened to open session. Council met and closed session. Conference with real proper negoti, real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property at 22582, City Center Court, APN 0277-161-30. City negotiator G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, negotiating party San Bernardino County Fire Department, under negotiation price and terms of payment. No reportable actions. Direction was given to staff. So at this time, we will adjourn. City council meeting is being closed in memory of Grand Terrace resident William J. McKeever. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 21st, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. And the request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. We are adjourned.